Hello. Thank you for joining us this evening for our town council meeting. It's an odd date for us, but we didn't want to meet on the week of Thanksgiving because so many people travel. So, thank you for taking the time to join us. First and foremost, I would like to, before we do anything, I would like to give a quick update and shout out to many, many fire departments. On Sunday, our fire department, along with many others, and Chipper Wilkerson standing at the back, is somebody that I don't know what we'd do without. I really don't. He's an incredible fire chief in person. So, we want to say thank you. Eighteen different response organizations representing sixteen outside agencies, eighty-eight total personnel on the scene, seven personnel backfilling. We had support from Flint Hill Fire Department, Leslie Fire Department, Riverview Fire Department, Rock Hill Fire Department, TKK Fire Department, York County Fire Safety, Indian Land Fire Department, Riverside Fire Department, Van White Fire Department, and yes, if you live here, it's Van White, Pineville Fire Department, Steel Creek Fire Department out of Mecklenburg County, the York County Sheriff's Office, the Fort Mill Rescue, and the South Carolina Forestry Commission. This fire affected twenty-three acres along Dobie's Bridge Road. We're not the only area in the state to have had fires recently. It was a heavy wind day, and it's been very dry. Those fires can spread quickly and endanger people living in homes along these corridors. Our staff was able to get out information very rapidly. Our police department helped manage that Dobie's Bridge Road was closed down to traffic so these guys could do what they do best. And I just want to make certain that everybody understands how important this work is. Not only did they get that fire under control, but they stayed overnight. Rock Hill sent tall lights, and we stayed overnight to watch for hot spots. Guys, it doesn't get any better than the people that don't sleep to make sure you and I are okay. So, if we would, can we give a standing ov- to Chief Wilkerson of Fort Mill Fire Department? And those that took the night off. Thank you. We'll now start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Ronnie Helms will give us our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we're coming for you tonight, as we go into this season of Thanksgiving, we want to, first of all, say thank you. Thank you for another year that you've brought us through. Thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. I pray that you bless each and every one that's represented here tonight. Touch us, guide us, direct us, give us wisdom, and conduct the town's business. We give you the praise and glory for it all, and in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. As we conduct this meeting, we would ask if you have any device that may ring, chirp, or play us a song, please put it on silent so that we can have your full attention and you can have ours. I see we have quite a few folks of age at the back. You guys want to stand up and somebody tell me what class you're taking and what we can do to make sure you get the appropriate credit.
Most of us are from a government class at the town where it's these public people over here at Fort Mill High School, and we just have a citizenship project. So, we had to come to the town council meeting, kind of take that side.
Awesome. So, we have high school students attempting to learn what we do and get credit for it. I'd like to welcome David Martin to our meeting tonight, and we have a lot of other important business and important folks coming up. So, thank you all for joining us. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of the council chambers prior to the start of the meeting, and they're given three minutes each. Do we have anyone signed in to speak? Thank you. So, we'll jump right in with one of my favorite organizations, the Fort Mill Economic Partners. Organizational update. Mariah Price will give us an update on how things are going.
Good evening. Thank you. Here we go. I appreciate you all allowing us to come again. Mariah Price with Fort Mill Economic Partners. We're here to give-
Pull it towards you, or is it working?
Is that better?
Tap on it, because I can't. I don't hear it. Chris?
It's not going to really-
Hello.
Could you yell at us, please?
Okay. I think it works now. Can you hear it?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're here to provide an update of what we've been doing this past year and to answer any questions. You know, we're in constant communication as we try our best with town staff and council, so give a brief overview of things we've been doing. Our updates tonight include our website, our fundraising event of the Strawberry Sprint and Stroll this past year, our newsletter, a grant that we started, our art mural and microtransit pilot program. So, we launched late last year our discoverfortmill.org. So, we this year have put a focus on getting the website out there and making updates and making sure it's up to date. We were awarded with the SCPRT advertisement grant, and we were able to start a Google ad to get Discover Fort Mill out on Google and any searches. Since then, we've been able to get greater analytics of who is using our website. In the last twenty-eight days, we've had over fifteen hundred users visiting the site. This also has been able to allow us to have greater engagement and partnerships with businesses and organizations. For example, we have partnered with Anna with Fort Mill Now, who writes our blogs and our events for the page, and they have high engagement through that. She also posted it on her newsletter to bring more awareness to our website. We're going to continue focusing on this website as the year goes on and next year as well with more marketing. So, we've been very grateful for this project. And then, our Strawberry Sprint and Stroll 5K and Fun Run this year, it was a great turnout, another great partnership with the town staff and the strawberry festival. We have Mr. Hudgens, of course, represented on the screen. So, we're just very grateful. This is a special event for us. It is our biggest fundraiser for our organization, but it's also a collaboration with town and our local businesses. We had a little over nine hundred participants, which was better than we expected with it being spring break this year. Next year, we won't run into that issue with Easter not being so late and spring break not affecting, but we are very grateful for the turnout that we had, even with a lot of people being out of town. We also were able to have Fort Mill Care Center as our charitable organization, and we were able to donate a little over $3,000 to them just from the race proceeds. So, another successful year. We're planning already for next year. It's April 25th, so mark your calendars. We're going to be having our race website launch December 1st with the early bird special, and then we're continuing our marketing efforts. Another thing that we continued on with this year is a quarterly newsletter. On our website, we have a function that you can sign up to receive these newsletters, and we have over two hundred and sixty-five subscribers to date just from the website. These newsletters are sent out quarterly, and we try to highlight different things that our organization are working on, but also different development projects or projects going on within the town and anything that the town is doing. And this, our past fall newsletter, as you can see, it featured the mural, which I'll talk about here shortly, and Debbie as our spotlight and all the work that she's done. So, if you're interested in receiving these, if you do not receive them, you can sign up on our website. Another special project that we have been able to accomplish this year is our utility infrastructure grant. So, this is a grant program to encourage investment in revitalization of the downtown commercial district. It provides a reimbursable matching grant up to $15,000, and we were able to award our first recipients, which was the speckled pear market, and we awarded them in this past June. So, we received some additional applications since then that are currently under review, and we're looking to continue this in the next year. We also have our official unveiling of the art mural, actually this Thursday, November 20th, at four o'clock. So, if you're available, please come out. We're going to be having a little, we're going to have a drape, so our official unveiling of the wall of all of Debbie's hard work and the, able that we were able to do this through the accommodations tax grant from the town of Fort Mill. So, we're very grateful that we were able to do this and just add some more art into the downtown area, but also another tourist piece that people can come and look at and take pictures of. So, that's coming. We're so excited. It's been working on this whole year, and Debbie's been hard at work. If you've seen her out on that forklift, making you're, making you a little nervous with how high she has to go, but she's done a great job, and we're very grateful for her hard work. Another key project that I know you guys are aware of, because we've been able to come and speak to you all about, but I want to give an update since we've been able to speak to you. So, our microtransit pilot program, again, this is a pilot program that we are looking to launch next year in hopes of bringing microtransit to the three commercial districts. To date, we are still looking for additional partnerships for the remaining of the funding. We're hoping to hear from the county on whether they're able to help us financially, but we're also looking at some public and private partnerships that we can be able to launch this next year. The next step after securing the funding would be to sign our contract and start our marketing campaign for this program. So, we are definitely still hard at work at this and hoping to be able to launch in next year. In addition, some, we have some new board members on our board, which is very exciting. We have two new businesses. We have Unique Loom and Sunbelt Rentals who joined our board, but we also have some new faces from organizations that have already been on the board, but their previous members have stepped away due to different obligations. So, we're very grateful. It's always nice to have new insights and different visions and opinions of how we can make our organization better. So, we're very grateful for our new board I know I kind of talked quick, but I want to respect everyone's time, so if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
I don't have any questions, but I am so appreciative of the work that this group has been able to accomplish. I've known about the group since it had another name, and this is the greatest progress I've seen in so many years. It's, the mural's gorgeous. The race is forever at this point. It is given, that that is a part of Fort Mill's annual offerings, and I'm so proud of the progress. Love the little shrink wrap on the car.
Yeah.
And can't wait to see what a difference that makes. So, thank you for all the businesses that invest in Fort Mill, and you continue to invest by coming together and offering opportunities for other businesses to come in. We're so grateful for what you do. We are very grateful for what you do.
Thank you.
Counsel?
For the utility infrastructure grant, what's the timing on applications? Is that ongoing throughout the year, or do you have a specific deadline for those?
Yes, that's a great question. It's ongoing throughout the year as funding is available.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And they must be in the town limits? Is that required?
Correct. Yes. And if there is, all the requirements are also on the website for anyone to be able to view.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that that helps some of the folks that want to site in a facility that doesn't have the utility set up necessarily to do the business they do. So, it helps them offset that cost so they can operate in that space. Did I describe that properly?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and the speckled pears doing fabulous. So, thank you. And Jerry, I see you sitting there. Thank you for joining their board. It's a great group of people. Couldn't ask for any better. So, thank you so very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it, and thank you for bringing us up to date. That's always important. All right. We do not have any new business for this evening. We will move immediately into old business. Item number one, second reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the town of Fort Mill to change the zoning designation for York County tax maps 02006, 01, 051, 052, 053, 054, 058, and 034. This is approximately 15.9 acres from General Industrial and R-10 to one family residential district to MXU, Mixed Use Development District to adopt a mixed use concept plan and development conditions and other matters relating thereto. This is in Ward Two, which is Ronnie Helms' ward. Chris Pettit, has anything changed since our last presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Two changes. One, being a typo was fixed, and one, we went through the permissible uses and inserted into prohibited uses being tattoo parlors and payday lending establishments to be consistent with some of our zoning districts, but those are the only changes.
Awesome. Council members, do you have any questions in regards to this particular item?
No questions. Just wondering, since we've got such a large group of people, do you mind doing just a quick overview of what the project is? I hate to take up much time, but since-
I would love to have Jerry give a brief overview of this project.
Just, I think-
Just an overview for the young folks at the back.
Follow Mariah?
Exactly. Well, and we've got the pictures in our information, too. I just think, I mean, this is the group that's going to be able to use the housing that's coming to it, hopefully.
Absolutely. And I don't have a presentation, I'm sorry, but I'll give you a narrative of what we're doing. It's an old mill that's been in town for a long time. A portion of it is 130 years old, and the building, through quite a bit of effort, was able to attain historic registry in the state, and that is a big plus for the development and also, I think, more importantly, for the outward appearance of the building, so it looks like it's been here forever, and we continue the Fort Mill-ish look. We're going to convert it to 225 apartments, along with 25,000 square foot of retail space, and I believe it is a true extension of Main Street, and I think it will become a community magnet for the township folk to enjoy. Some of the benefits that we're adding so that the entire town can benefit from this is a second level of parking for the public. We're also widening the streets, doing diagonal parking on Watson, so we're realigning Watson, realigning Link Street to allow for circulation. We've also incorporated a housing subsidy for the Fort Mill employees, inclusive of the school district, where a percentage of the apartments are going to be offered at discounted rates for the employees. And if the apartment building is full and an employee wants to get on the waitlist, it'll automatically be hopscotch to the number one position. So, we're really excited. We had a couple of meetings this past week with our professional team. We've heard from Ship-O regarding the plans. There's a couple of little things that they're looking for us to do, but what we looked at the last time with the elevations and what the outward appearance of the building is going to be has not changed at all. So, it's a really exciting time right now. Really exciting. We'll be done with design development drawings by December 1, moving into construction documents, which I hope to have done by the end of January, to present to the township for permit review.
For those of you in the back, this is the old mill structure down near the foot of Main Street there, near Spratt. It is currently being, it's vacant.
It's a vacant, abandoned building.
It's vacant. It's not being used, and it is zoned industrial, meaning that right now, the operation of an industry is pertinent to that zoning, so an industry could go there. These fine folks that use the building for their rug company-
Correct.
-really thought it would better serve our community as a mixed-use area where we would have apartments that they have worked with us to provide opportunities for teachers and town employees at a reduced rate for a place to live, and a parking deck, and some beautiful landscaping and architecture that will be in keeping with the designation that it now holds on the National Historic Register. So, this has been a collaborative process that I have to say, the Nassari family and Jerry, our town planning staff, everyone has worked really hard to make this good for Fort Mill. So, I am very proud of the work that's been done and the patience that's been offered on this particular project.
Well, we're appreciative of all your comments and all your input. I think when you do it together collaboratively, you really get something that's going to be special. I really believe that.
I agree. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone have any questions?
I had a question, and I apologize if you may not have seen it in here, but the last time we addressed the new structure being, going through planning commission and the old structure going through HRB. Just didn't know if that was, I didn't see that in there, or would that be in?
Yes, that is in there, and it was, yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I've looked my thoughts.
To that point, Councilman, in the documentation we received Friday afternoon, Ship-O and MPS will also be reviewing the new building.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of regulatory oversight from our planning commission, our zoning board, and the state commissions and agencies-
Yes.
-that will oversee to ensure that the work is done properly, not just to our satisfaction for what it will result in. So, a lot of hands in this particular project, and everybody working for the same result.
Further questions or comments?
I'll make a motion. We approve old business item number one.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve in several seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. We appreciate you and look forward to this project.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you so much. Old business item number two, second reading, an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the town of Fort Mill to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Chris Pettit?
Thank you, Mayor. No changes on this item either. This is required by the state, Act 176, otherwise known as the Business License Standardization Act. Basically makes the process for getting a business license consistent across the state, and so this requirement to update the business license class schedule every jurisdiction throughout the state that charges business licenses is also doing that before the end of the year. So, happy to answer any questions you may have on that, but no changes since first reading.
Any questions in regards to this item? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve old business item number two.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve old business item number two in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you. New business item number one, first reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-16 so as to change the duration for the temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for rezoning or annexation of new residential developments. Chris Pettit?
Thank you, Mayor. Council adopted ordinance 25-16, which was a temporary moratorium. Earlier this year, as we were beginning to undertake our comprehensive plan rewrite, our downtown master plan creation, and our parks and recreation plan, those plans are slated to be finalized and come before council the first of the year for adoption. So, the original intent of the moratorium was to put a pause on new residential development as our vision was molded by these new plans. So, this extension of that temporary moratorium allows us to finalize that vision prior to accepting any new applications for residential development, and it will run through the end of March or earlier if canceled by council.
Okay. Any questions to this extension of the temporary moratorium on residential development?
When will we start planning for our ordinance review related to these items?
As far as text amendments from the code-
Correct.
-once, I think we get together and are all in agreement of the vision, then we can certainly move forward on doing that.
If for some reason we were not quite there at the end of March, can we extend it again? Or?
You can. You can.
And just for the folks that will be watching this on tape later, this was very intentional on our part to help us through our comprehensive plan update that's required, our downtown plan update, it's a new plan, and our parks and rec plan. So, we have a lot of work going forward to planning how we want to structure our future. So, what we wanted to do was to make sure that our planning staff and everyone on our staff had the opportunity to verify the work, make it properly documented so that each of us could vote on that as a policy and a movement forward. I think it has been helpful, and we will continue to do the extension until we're prepared to move forward intentionally.
Many, many hours have gone into not only the meetings, but then reading again-
Yes.
-going back over it, making notes and things like that. So, there's been a tremendous amount of time and effort by a lot of people that's gone into that.
Agreed.
And things like the mill project that was before, the reason those continue to go is because they were already in place before the moratorium.
Correct.
Only in the process.
Yes.
Chris, did you have something you wanted to contribute?
Yeah, so we're just, if we're not further along by the end of March, we would just come up and just vote for another extension like Alan was talking about, or does it just-
No, you would have to take a new action to do that, yes. So, it would have to come back before council.
Would it be an automatic six months, or we could do three months, or?
It's whatever we vote.
Whatever we vote. Okay.
So, we have those opportunities to revisit it, but I think we have to do that responsibly to ensure that we're not holding people up for the sale of their property or the building of their home. You know, it affects more than just large developments. It affects a lot. So, we're not doing it without reason or intent to make this better for everyone. We are doing this for the right reasons, but we will have to be intentional as we move forward. I used that word about five times, didn't I?
Intentional.
It was applicable.
Intentionally did.
All right. I need a-
Make a motion to approve new business item number one.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve new business item number one in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you. All right. That is one of the shorter meetings we've had in quite some time. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Moody, for the good of the whole.
First of all, I'm honored to sit in Mr. Wolf's space. I kind of feel like Superman in his chair.
Oh, yeah.
I miss you, Chris, wherever you are. No, but it's been a busy year. We've gotten a lot accomplished. It's not easy running a town this size. A lot of workshops. I think it's maybe twenty or thirty hours worth of workshops just for our budget alone. Zoom calls and breakout sessions. So, I mean, but it's good, you know, to see the progress we're making and kind of like, it's kind of like SimCity for, in real life, you know, computer game, right? You know?
It is.
You get to cast a vision and see it happen with fire departments and different infrastructure projects. I'm excited about the future and next year. So, excited about the tree lighting and the barber shop tree lighting after the mate put a plug in for that Friday morning. Go to Wormy's and Jeff's. It's a great event. Not as good as our tree lighting, but it's pretty good. It's the Charlie Powers Christmas tree, our former mayor, which is a coat rack with Christmas lights on it. But it's really cool, and then the parade coming up. So, looking forward to all the end of the year festivities, so.
Thank you, Chris.
That's it. Thank you.
Ronnie?
Just wanted to do another shout out from the fire department. I know what they're going through, because I was one for a while, but really proud, looking forward to Christmas season. It's going to be another beautiful year.
It is.
And looking forward to seeing my new great-grandbaby.
There you go. Ronnie's raising an army.
I would like to take a second to not jump to Christmas, but to recognize and acknowledge the holiday next week. Thanksgiving is incredibly important to our nation as the roots of Thanksgiving were because people survived to live here in this country. We come together as families, and I would like to thank everyone on staff and on council for operating as diligently as we have this year. We have come together, and we are a family. We fight like brothers and sisters on a given day, but it's all for the right reasons and the right intent-
and the right intent. We all want to do what's good for Fort Mill. So, I'm extremely thankful for the hard work that has gone into this year and as Chris Moody said, we've made a lot of progress, so thank you all. This is leaf season. I've noticed a lot of people think it's okay to blow their leaves all the way out to the center line. It is not. It is not okay to blow your leaves into the storm drain so that if it ever rains again, they won't work. Please use caution and care if it rains and the people that have blown them out to the center line, it's slippery. So, please refer to our website for any information regarding what to do with yard refuse and please do that appropriately so that you're not creating a hazard for anyone else. I look forward to the Christmas events. They come very quickly after Thanksgiving, probably not have another council meeting before we have the tree lighting, maybe not before the Christmas parade. So, thanks to everyone that participates in those and makes our town really feel like a real small town. It's a good feeling.
Lisa?
Yeah, so we celebrated Veterans Day last week and as always, our town does it top notch. So, thank you for all who participated, but thank you more to the veterans and the families that have sacrificed for our freedom. Also, as we talk about Thanksgiving, we have to acknowledge Catawba Ridge High School Band that'll be performing at the Macy's Day Parade, so we're all looking forward to seeing that and celebrating with them. And then also, there's a group of boys at the back. I'll get emotional because of Casey, but for three years now, we've done dinner at my house with a select group of football players. It's kind of a mentoring and giving back to them and I am so proud of you all and all that y'all are doing. Held Northwestern to six points in the first half, that was awesome. We're not going to talk about the second half, but, but I look forward to seeing all of you in the audience become our future leaders. I will say, when I was in high school, I didn't serve on student council, I didn't do anything like that and here I am, you know, in getting ready to start my 11th year of doing town council. You are our future leaders. David Martin, future leader. Did you think in high school or in college you'd ever be in your position? So, Fort Mill is doing a great job at raising some wonderful people in this community and I know every one of you will do the same, so thank y'all for being here.
Don't make her cry again, okay?
I've got seniors out here and they've been with me for a long time, so.
Go ahead.
You know, Thanksgiving's next week, so I just want to say what I'm thankful for. I'm thankful for my family. I'm thankful for my second family, which is here. You know, I spend, some weeks we spend just as much time together than we do with our family.
We do.
You know, thankful for all the projects that we have in the works and I'm thankful for the staff that's making these projects happen. We're really, we're really doing some things that's going to set the town up for the next, you know, 10, 20, 50 years. So, thank you guys for, for all that you do. Y'all, y'all really make it happen. So, thank you for council for, like I said, we don't always agree, but you know, we're always respectful to each other and that's, you know, that's, that's important. You're not going to find this, a group like this just about anywhere in this area right here. I'm thankful for our other representatives, for David Martin, for all that you do for, for our town and you've stepped up and really, I mean, you've, you've done an excellent job, so thank you for, for that. Thank you for the fire department. There's a, there's a, there's a phrase, it's the six Ps. Proper preparation prevents piss poor performance, okay? And the fire department, that's, that's what they did right there. That's, that's having your stuff in, in order, so when you have an event like that, you don't think about it. You already know exactly what you're going to do, you know who you're going to call. So, you know, we've got a top notch fire department. And Fort Mill High School, boys and girls cross country, state champs, so.
No, that's also...
Fort Mill. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Dan?
I'm going to throw out a challenge, especially to our high school crowd. I did it a few years ago and it's kind of been an annual thing. It was pretty neat when I started it. Grab a notebook, legal pad, you can do it on a roll of toilet paper with the right pen, but make a list of things you're thankful for. Little things, big things, especially little things. You will find that there are amazing, are an amazing amount of things that you can truly look in the mirror or look at your family and really appreciate maybe a little better if you see it written down, you know, in pen or paper. But take that challenge and challenge the people around you. Just be thankful.
Well said.
To summarize what we're all thinking, you guys matter. You matter to us. We see you. We know what you're doing to grow up and to become the people that you will be and we're always prayerful that that will be productive citizens, that will give back to the community that loves you so much. If you ever feel like you're not loved, call one of us and we'll make sure you do. So, thank you for showing up in great numbers this evening.
Absolutely. Do it again next month too, come on.
Yeah, I love to see you there and let us know if we can be of help and service in any way. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you for joining us.